Okay, we will call the order. The planning, budget planning commission D. We have a roll call.
Commissioner Adams.
Here.
Altamirano.
Here.
Contreras.
Here.
Shrupp. Riley.
Here.
Vice Chair Baker.
Here.
Chair Person Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Dunleavy, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any citizen input? Anything not on the agenda, anything other than what's on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to the consent items, the minutes of the October 10th meeting. Do we have any comments?
I might be getting confused, but we are missing the PG&E item there, right? Or am I confusing meetings?
Why are we missing pages one and two?
You're missing pages one and two of the minutes? Or are they from pages?
I have four.
I have three.
I have three and four. I have one, two, three, four.
I have three.
I have three.
Yeah. And it had...
I think the number three and four. I don't think there were more than two pages.
Yeah.
I have only one page.
So it had the PG&E item, which we approved. It had the zoning regarding cannabis in our discussion, which one motion was turned down, one motion was approved. We had...
But we're missing them. So I'd suggest you just hold them over to the next meeting.
Hold them over to the next meeting. Okay?
I don't know what happened there.
All right. We'll have to put that on your permanent record.
Well, I think I printed the minutes and somebody probably had the first two pages and I had the last eight pages.
I got them because you emailed them to me. Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
Okay, staff or commission reports. Anybody have anything to report? You know? Okay. Having none, we will move along to our discussion items. Public hearing and consideration of an application on Stone Throw for a modified plan development permit.
Good evening, Chair and commission. So this item was scheduled to be heard before you at the last meeting on October 10th. In the very last minute, the applicant requested a continuance to tonight's meeting, which you granted. What's good for you tonight is an amendment to a plan development permit that was issued in 2007 as part of the original entitlements for this particular subdivision, which is, was called Winter's Highlands now as Stone Throw. And the applicant is requesting a number of modifications to the Plan One and Plan Four primarily. And then during my review, noticed that there would also need to be some granted. And I don't know how we've done them in the past really for the duets, which if you look at the site plan that was included with your package, you almost invariably have to do multiple ones for a duet, something that hopefully will address as part of our zoning code update, which is an item that we'll discuss later on tonight's agenda. Mostly the reduction. And do you have a way? Bring up the PowerPoint. This is 207, that's your recorder. So as I mentioned, most of the changes are to the Plan One. And they're asking for a reduction in the setbacks, both the front and the rear for the Plan One. If you look at the attachment that was included with your report, you'll see there's a setback variance exhibit called Attachment C. You can see where they're showing a 15-foot rear yard and a 15-foot front yard setback. The note that the 15-foot on the front is to the house and not to the garage. They're still maintaining a 20-foot setback for the garage, which allows two cars to park off the street. And then the other one, as I mentioned to you, was the Plan Four, which also is asking for a reduction. And that is... And four is there, and you see it highlighted with or clouded with the red. And that's for the front setback as well. And that's a reduction to 15.67 as shown on Exhibit E. And I wrote it as just 15 feet in the proposed permit amendments that are included as an Attachment H. And then the last one, as I mentioned to you, had to do with the Plans Six and Seven. Attachment C. On the last page of Attachment G, you'll see a number of plans that show how the duet or corner lots are going to be developed. The Phase One, one is at the very top of the page. As the arrows point out, the variances are going to be to... If you look where the one arrow is, it's to the rear setback, which is 17 feet instead of 20. If you look at the other two arrows, it's the rear yard of the Plan Seven, because its front yard faces opposite of the front yard for the Plan Six. It's the side yard of the Plan Six. And those are all asking for a modification to the plan development permit to allow them to move forward. And then something I've learned from other cities that I've worked for, oftentimes when a city does a plan development, they don't think about the future. They only think about the house that's being built at the time. And so what happens is a homeowner comes in and goes, "I want to add a patio cover." Or, "I want to put some sort of addition to the rear of my house that most normal houses would have, shade structure, trellis, whatever you want to call it." And they come into the city and we go, "Oh, sorry. You've already got a reduced setback. You can't reduce it anymore unless you go back to the planning commission," which is a huge expense for an individual homeowner to tackle. So I was trying to be a little bit forward-thinking in adding some changes to Attachment H that would allow for that future. And if you look at the Plan Three, which is included also in your package, they show an optional loggia. That loggia would, if it was built, would encroach into the setback reduction that they've asked for. And so I use that sort of as my benchmark for what a reasonable patio cover would be. And so in the Attachment H, you'll see that there's a reference to a rear yard reduction for a future patio cover and/or loggia for a number of the models that don't have or won't have the required rear yard setback. Attachment H. Is everyone with me on that?
Looking, no.
We don't have an H to the very end.
But it's at the very back.
It's at the very back of the staff report, before the start of the next staff report. Past the maps. Says Exhibit Eight at the top and Attachment H at the bottom. So to address the potential for a future addition, I added language that's in the... Attachment H references a potential of an eight by 12 or some sort of eight by something dimension patio cover in the rear yard, including the loggia, which is shown on the Plan Three that I just referred to, that would allow a homeowner a reasonable addition, understanding these are smaller than standard lots. So allowing them to have a large addition of a patio cover would seem out of place without having to come back in front of the planning commission. In other words, staff could administratively approve it if it fell within those parameters. And so in summary, one other thing I wanted to point out, I gave you an email that I received from the representative of the applicant, Mr. Goulart, who's here. And we had a discussion, which I failed to hit on, but I will now briefly. I had written in the staff report on Page Three that there would be a lack of parking that would be created as a result of the five-yard rear yard setback, which is how Winter's Ranch alley-loaded product is built. And in a previous life, I won't mention where, they required a parking pad adjacent to the garage in order to help offset the loss of the driveway. And talking to Mr. Goulart, he was a little uncomfortable with that. First off, I really didn't give him a heads-up that it was coming until almost the day of the staff report going out. And he offered as an alternative the language that's in the email, which I think is a reasonable compromise, which would be to offer that as an option to a potential buyer. So if that potential buyer wanted the additional parking slab, what do you want to call it, adjacent to their garage off the alleyway, they could pay for that option. And then theoretically, if they wanted to park an extra vehicle or an RV, a small RV or a boat or something back there, and then that would essentially still help the situation again by losing the two-car driveway that you would normally have with a four-car product. So with that change and the discussion that I had previously regarding the other reductions and the setbacks, I'm available to answer any questions.
Questions?
Yeah. Kind of working my way from the last thing back. Whose parking concerns are we worried about with that option, right? Because that, if the homeowner wants a parking space, that's fine and good. But if the idea is that you're going to have these homes without that parking and they're going to be parking either in a block in a space or, you know, if it's community parking that we're talking about, then that might not necessarily solve the issue.
It's really, it's mostly for the homeowner's benefit. It's not really community parking, because you can obviously park on a public street. And you will gain a street parking space by the loss of the driveway. So it's really just to have sort of apples and apples, where a normal front-loaded house would have four, potentially four parking spaces available to it. And in this case, there's really only going to be three as standard, and then the fourth would be optional. But as I mentioned to you, the Winter's Ranch, which I went by and looked at it today, and most of the homes, not all of them, are occupied that are alley-loaded. And so far, it's been working well. You see parking on the street, but you don't see, you know, car to car, nose to car, nose to car. There's available spaces, in other words. And the alley right now is looking pretty good. We'll see how it does over time, but nobody's parking illegally in the alleyway, like parallel to the garage, which you often see where half the car is still stuck out in the alleyway. So at least so far, it's working.
So in theory, I mean, this option is always there. It's just a matter of who's paying for it, right? No, is this...
Yeah.
Are they offering...
Oh, no, no. The option's there. The option's there, absolutely. The homeowner could come back on their own, their own time and someday in the future and choose to take out that space. The only difference really, though, would be an expense the homeowner would have to incur is moving the fence. The way I describe it here is that the fence would be obviously at the back of the space so that you would have easy access to it. If you don't go with that option, the fence is going to be close to the alleyway. And so you'd either have to install it or move the fence if you chose to put that in.
But the, I guess, more direct, who's paying for this?
The homeowner.
Homeowner, okay. Either way, the homeowner's paying for it.
Correct.
Correct. Whether or not there's some work done up front to make it easier.
Correct.
My question's still after the public hearing.
Okay, any other...
I've got one more question. So Dave, when you're talking about the four parking spaces and the three parking spaces, you're talking about two inside the garage and two outside the garage would be four.
Right. So you're only required in Winter's to provide two parking spaces, but obviously the driveway always, as default, ends up to be the potential for two more. And you lose one, there's a net loss of one under this scenario with the alley-loaded product. Not sure that's terrible, but I'm just pointing out the fact that in all the front-loaded houses that these, this builder will be building, will have the potential of four cars off the street. I mean, the alley-loaded generally is a smaller product, so maybe the thinking is you're less likely to have the need for the four-car spaces.
Other questions? Okay, we'll open up the public hearing on this at 6:45. Are any questions or comments from the public?
Good evening, Chair, members of the commission. Jeremy Goulart with Town Development of Sacramento, the owner, developer of Stone Throw, formerly Winter's Highlands. I happen to keep calling it Stone Throw, otherwise I get in trouble. I want to thank you for your consideration tonight, first of all.
This is for the public hearing? I think we're going to hear from you after.
I can't... Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're going to hear from you. Don't worry, get your chance.
I was so anxious.
This is for anybody here, and that's great. That's as it should be. Anybody not directly involved who has anything to say about it? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at 6:46, and we will now hear from Jeremy.
Again, Jeremy Goulart, Town Development of Sacramento. Thanks. I also want to thank you very much for continuing this item. And I know it was last minute. I had a death in the family that was unexpected, so I needed to spend time with my family and wasn't able to be here last month. So again, thank you for that. We're looking forward to getting this project started, and I know that, I believe that's a pretty popular question around town right now. When are they starting? When are they starting? And we have been slowed a bit by some utility and easement issues we've been working through over the last couple of months. But weather permitting, we're going to continue to keep working through the winter and see this project started here next year. This really, this application is really the last step in moving forward with the plans that were approved by the DRC and the Planning Commission, I believe, back in July. And they're really memorializing a PD modification that was very similar to one that was approved back in 2007 for the previous developer. They're applying it to our architecture, kind of putting built-in suspenders on that. We really are excited about building this product. We do have some tough lots with smaller lot sizes. The alley-loaded is particularly challenging, trying to find a good square footage that's marketable, that people want to buy, but also staying as close to we can within the parameters of the city's requirements and the current PD. So I'm happy to take any questions you may have. Again, appreciate staff's time on this, staff's work on this, and thank you for your consideration.
Next, questions?
Other questions with staff or the applicant? Lots Six and Seven, your, the proposal is to remove the, to take the setback to zero, essentially resulting in almost a zero lot line development. So can you give a little more explanation on those two?
So where they join, which is what makes them a duet, there's a property line. Those are going to be separate lots. And so you're effectively taking the setback down to zero because they're adjoined. Short of them being adjoined, they would just have these setbacks that you see elsewhere on the lot. They're also exceeding on the lot coverage on one of the models, if you can see by the footprint.
Right, from 50 to 70 watt, which I was fine with. I was just wondering, are you common wall or to zero lot?
Just the common wall. I mean, I reference it as detail on the site plan, so that would stop somebody from coming in here, which would need a variance anyhow, or maybe a lot coverage variance, to extend that zero plot line further in one direction or the other, which I can see kind of what you're hinting at. But yeah, right now, you're only approving it as per that plan. Any deviation from that plan would need separate approval.
That does answer my question.
Other...
I have a question for the developer. Kind of just some background info. You mentioned a minute ago that some of those smaller lots, it's difficult to work within the constraints of, you know, what the plan development overlay is.
Sure.
And also produce homes that are marketable. Can you explain that a little bit as to what about a home that would be within the confines of the plan development overlay? Is it marketable? Is it, you know, less bedrooms and just smaller square footage?
Right. Kind of a combination of both. So I mean, it's really finding that square footage that folks are looking for as providing the bedrooms. I mean, it's kind of, you need three minimum. Four's great. Most people are looking for a four-two, fourth bedroom, two bath. So trying to provide that bedroom square footage and a decent livable square footage and staying with as close to you can within the parameters of the setbacks, especially if you have an alley-loaded garage that eats up a lot of the usable yard. Folks also want to have some usable yard. So that was the, those are the pieces of the puzzle we really struggled with in putting together the plans. I think we did a great job at it, but we're just a little bit outside of what would be within the PD today, but consistent with what was approved previously. So does that answer your question?
Yeah, it just, you mentioned the yard, and it seems like that's kind of a trend is smaller and smaller yards, which I think, depending on who you are, it might be perfectly fine. And to others, it would be just absolutely not fine. But I did notice that, you know, we're building these homes that are, quite frankly, they look beautiful and, you know, they're fantastic. But I don't think, you know, they're all pretty big homes, and so I don't know that I would agree that a smaller home isn't marketable. I just, I can think of a lot of people who would like smaller homes. And so, and we try to get people who might not be able to afford a bigger home into a home here in Winter's. And so now what we're doing is we're putting those people in, you know, 2,000, 2,500, 2,700 square feet homes, when maybe a smaller home might be okay. I don't think there's anything wrong with the plans that you show them, but I just think maybe generally speaking, maybe outside of your development itself and Winter's in general, I think that's something that we should be looking into. I don't think it's absurd to have families start off in a two-bedroom home. I don't think it's absurd to start off in a smaller three-bedroom home. Again, this might, this probably goes beyond what you're here to do and, you know, not to, you know, make an discouraging remarks on what you guys have done, because I think it's, quite frankly, it's fantastic. But I do think that is something that needs to be said.
Well, we also, too, within the project, the overall project, and I don't have a map available, I apologize, but we have a Phase One A just below Phase One. It's 48 lots. Those are a smaller lot, smaller than this, and that would accommodate those smaller units, probably, I would guess, and again, not knowing, you know, 14 to 18, 1900 square feet, maybe 2,000. So there will be varying product types throughout our overall plan from a square footage perspective. Not in this first phase, per se, that we're talking about tonight. But immediately thereafter, we're already working on improvement plans on that section to get that product type out to market here.
With kind of the same proportions as far as the yard, or would you...
I mean, the yards would be a little bit smaller, but that area would also incorporate some common area, no, common area's not the right word, but for lack of a better term, green spaces between the homes. I mean, the backyards would be somewhat limited, not that they aren't here as well. So I want to say those square footages are roughly 1,000 square feet less than what we have here. So again, we're looking to get that product out as well. And then I think it's mostly incredibly difficult to hit that sweet spot. And I mean, I think if you guys haven't hit it, you've come pretty close. I mean, it's, like I said, impressive everything you've done. But thank you, Ms. Monti. Thank you.
Yes, John?
To just kind of show on the map, we don't have the whole plan. This is basically Phase One right in here, and this is what he's talking about. It's on Neiman. Specifically, directly adjacent to that is green space and all that. So the lots, when they come together, and what he's talking about is directly adjacent to it, and it is meant for those smaller homes precisely what you've described.
So if I could. That seems to be a recurring theme at DRC, so we'll be excited when you come back with smaller ones. I would like to say that there has been a tendency to sacrifice design quality for raw square footage. It would be nice to see something that was thoughtfully designed on the interior so that you can maximize space. I'll look forward to that, which does not take away from what you're presenting this evening.
I'll go next. The, what is the smallest, is this Plan One? What is the square footage? Is that 1733?
Plan One.
Am I going to have to write that down?
You didn't, no. I want to... The Plan One A says the typical is 2176.
On this sheet here, it's the, there's Plan One A, and then on the backside, it says Plan One.
Attachment C, the backside of Attachment C.
Yeah, 1733 square feet, is that?
That's correct. I believe that is accurate, yes.
And then there's the garage.
Okay.
So the total.
Okay.
Yeah, those two are correct.
All right.
I just don't have the other ones.
I want to express the same thing, and it was, and it was, Lisa said the common theme is concern about, you know, if I was a developer, I'd know to the penny how much I got in the lot, how much I got in the other cost, and how much maximum square footage. I got the maximum project, because you are, after all, developing it too. It's a business. And I had the opportunity to go in and talk to staff and look at the map, just what John was referring there. And I was concerned we were losing a mix of houses, which it's our job to make sure that the development does provide a mix of houses. And they pointed out the small lots. They also pointed out the larger lots along the back part, which will have some bigger, probably luxury homes that are really going to run up there in price, most likely. So that alleviated some of my concerns on that, and you went right to that point, so. Other comments, questions? Okay.
If I could, I'd like to move the staff recommendation.
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
A second?
And that's with the change.
That's with the, with the attached changes?
It is.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Get you an S. Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to Item B. Public hearing and consideration on zoning code amendment to amend sections, a whole bunch of numbers, and B and E and all of that, as explained by Mr. Goulart.
So I'll be honest, I ran out of time on this particular agenda to spend a lot of time on this subject matter, much as I'd like to. If I started out with good intentions and then the other applications sort of got in the way. But I did give you some language based on the discussion from our last study session, which was in July, addressing comments, I believe, from Commissioner Contreras, having to do with how somebody add an accessory structure or a patio cover or something along one of the two creeks that encroaches into the required setbacks. And if you look at the language on Page Four, where I referenced the cities that I discussed earlier in the staff report, their issues as to how they treat their creeks, most of the cities allow for some process by which you could encroach into the setback with a permanent structure, which an accessory structure is considered permanent. And they give language as to who has the authority to make that decision. It looks like it varies from somebody at a staff level, although high up, like the Director of Public Works or...
If I could take a point of order. Since I have a property that abuts the creek, I'm going to step out.
Okay.
Sorry.
I thought I was just going to...
Yep, yep.
Forgot that you're one of those lucky ones. This could affect... And it also ratchets it up to a higher level, that the planning commission would be the deciding body on some encroachment into a creek setback. And so I proposed tonight, just again for discussion purposes, revising the language in 1756-020D, which talks about the 50 and 100-foot setback, and allow for the potential of an addition, but you would need to get approval from the planning commission, and you'd have to apply for a use permit. That's a public hearing, and we noticed property owners within 300 feet. We also have to publish in the newspaper, so that would give at least the immediate neighbors and other concerned citizens an opportunity to appear at that meeting and discuss their opinions and feelings about any potential encroachment. So that has to do with sort of accessory structures. And then what started, started this whole discussion way back when, as you remember, is Mr. DiMonte was going to add onto his house and was told that because his house is already within the setback, he couldn't do so under the present ordinance. And although he could theoretically apply for a variance, I think there was some sentiment that that wasn't a good way to go, because then how would you stop all the other people along both creeks that have the same situation from asking for a variance as well? So we talked about it... So we talked about it at the July seventh meeting, and again, if you look at the language in the staff report from the other cities that I've used as my references, they, not all, but many of them, allow a vertical extension of a non-conforming structure, meaning you could add a second floor to Mr. Geramati's house that didn't encroach any more than this existing house encroaches into the setbacks. And you could do so without having to get a variance, which is again, the language that's in seventeen one oh four O two O essentially says, you can't do it without a variance. Again, a very large expense and no guarantee, and again precedent setting. So, those were the two changes, and again, the little bit of discussion that I added to the staff report that you saw in July. Again, it's a study session tonight, so there's no decision that will be made. If you are comfortable with what direction staff has gone from your last two meetings, then we would memorialize this and bring it to you forward as an ordinance format. And other than that, answer any questions?
Questions?
Yeah. I think what you just said is kind of said on page four, but I'm not sure. It says in some studies, a non-conforming structure located along a creek may encroach into the setback subjectively. No, no, wait a second. There was another part. It was talking about the discrepancy, as long as the discrepancy between, I lost it here.
So the second part, as long as the discrepancy between is no greater than the current situation, essentially.
Right, so that's what you were talking about, by going up, you don't increase that discrepancy.
Correct. So you would, I mean, literally straight up.
Right.
Couldn't go straight up and throw a balcony on the second floor, or straight up and can't leave route two feet. In the case of Mr. Geramati, you could go up in the back, but he could theoretically go out on the sides of the rear in the part of his house that doesn't encroach into the creek setback. So that would leave him an opportunity.
But he would not be able to do what he originally was hoping to do, which was go further.
Correct, correct. Without, as I'm proposing here, without a use permit. So if he wanted to apply for a use permit, to go fifteen feet out into the creek setback, where he previously would need a variance, and, don't ask me to explain, but many cities can get around a variance with a use permit, because they make it somewhat the same in that it requires a public hearing, but it's not an absolute standard. He could apply for it. That's assuming this language were to be recommended for adoption by you, and then the city council were to implement that language in an ordinance.
Other questions?
So, accessory structures are just automatically included in your proposed language?
Yeah, I could not find any city, and I actually looked at some others besides the ones I wrote in the staff report of, that had a distinction between an accessory structure, which I think Commissioner Contreras may have been looking for originally in July, and the main structure itself, meaning the house. They didn't distinguish between those two.
So access like a patio?
Well, not so much a patio, but a covered patio.
A covered patio.
Or a workshop, or a pool, or a shed, or whatever else you can think of, somebody often puts in their backyard.
Anything vertical.
Anything vertical.
Well, what about a patio? Just patio by itself?
Just a patio, not necessarily, because you don't need a permit. We have an ordinance on as to how much lot you can cover with impervious surface, but it doesn't need a building permit to have a patio.
Okay.
So by definition, not a structure.
So you could, if you're going vertical, the second one applies.
Correct.
But the first additional language that you propose in to amend seventeen fifty-six O two O E, and you could still do an addition onto the house and have a bedroom there, you just have to go through a different process.
You're going to have to go through a different process. And again, that's what's being proposed, and that's what other cities that I've mentioned in the staff report often use as the sort of more restrictive method in which you could ask for that, the encroachment. I would say in some cities, it's simply a public works director or the city engineer that has that discretion, but I think in this case, it's better left in the planning commission's arena.
Lafayette, did there setback by the depth of the creek? Is there an average of dry creek here?
There probably is. I know when Doggo and I walked it, it was probably fifteen feet deep at the bridge to the bank, and then when you get to the other bridge, where I always forget the name of that property owner that's got property on the other side, maybe thirty feet, we were below the bank. So it definitely varies, and Lafayette does have a variable one.
Yeah.
We don't right now, and I'm not proposing that we go there, but it's obviously an option that exists, because I'm sure Peter Creek is the same. It's not a constant fifty feet below the top of the bank.
Other questions?
I, so, again, the first amendment that you propose doesn't distinguish between a patio cover and an additional bedroom, which I understand why you did that. But I don't know that somebody asking for a patio cover or a shed needs to come to the planning commission. That's kind of the, more of the issue that I, I understand why, the difficulties in finding language that would be suitable here, as opposed to having two exceptions, but, I mean, it just seems a little bit excessive to me. I don't know if anybody else agrees, but.
You could possibly, because it would require a permit, and a permit, you've got to put the cost down, so any permit on a project up to X cost can be handled by staff, over X cost has to go to the planning commission.
Yeah, and the city code actually gives duties to the zoning administrator, although that position technically isn't filled right now. So that's a lower level review than the planning commission, theoretically a less expensive review, which is an option that exists. Other cities have that for lesser permits, which is what I think you're asking. The struggle here, and obviously Mr. Don Levy knows much better than I, is you don't have an in-house city engineer, you don't have an in-house public works director, you don't have anybody that sort of could maybe take on that responsibility, that understands the subject, not that our outside city engineer does not, but that's not really his role. That's not what we've hired him to do, to where you could evaluate those lesser structures at a staff level. I mean, I'm comfortable with reducing it to a lower level, I'm just not sure who takes on that role if somebody actually applies.
One of the nice things about this proposal, though, is that coming to the planning commission, the neighbors get to come to public hearing, you know, rather than come to City Hall and.
Right, right. And usually zoning administrators, often their meetings are during the day, they're not at night like yours are, so if somebody like scheduled it at four o'clock or three o'clock when staff is at work, that's typically when a zoning administrator hearing takes place, so making it a little more difficult for the public to attend.
But again, I think we're opening up ourselves to some areas where if this house was on, you know, this side of town, their neighbor wouldn't have that type of say.
Correct.
Unless the concern is that somehow this patio cover is going to cause the erosion of the creek, which is going to lead to them losing their home. I don't know that that is even a door we want to open to that. Is it their job as neighbors to determine that this person can't have that particular patio cover? I mean, I.
I don't think so. I mean, it's your job to make that call if it's at your level. The thing with this is though, as Ms. Whitworth said when she was here, it's also protecting the city, and if you look at some of the other language having to do with this, you have, in many cases, have to sign essentially a waiver, a liability waiver, you know, not holding the city responsible. If you get a permit to build a patio cover, and then the thing ends up in the creek floating away, or you do something to damage your own house as a result of it, that you can't come back to the city. I think that's the other thing with a structure that gets built that isn't necessarily an addition to the house. What is it doing, if anything, to undermine the integrity of the creek itself?
Well, I think that's a legitimate concern, but again, I think the waiver can be done at a lower level, so to speak, and as it stands, I mean, the only difference, that's the only difference I would see, is that we're still opening ourselves up to that liability regarding whether you approve it or we.
Right, right. No, we would have the same disclaimer if I was making the decision for an accessory structure, or if you were making the decision. All of that would be the same. It would just be, as Commissioner Allen said, it would be something where it's not maybe easily, as easy to attend a meeting during day hours than it is to attend a meeting at night.
Would the, to apply for a, to end up with a planning commission and a use permit, what cost would be involved?
You know, I meant to look that up, and I don't have my binder with me. I want to say a use permit's somewhere around a thousand dollars. So, it's not prohibitive, but it's obviously cost that you have to bear if you're going to build a, you know, buy a tough shed. Well, if you're going to buy a tough shed, you just add that on to your cost. You know, the points that have been brought up are very well taken, because the idea, I mean, for some of these things, a tough shed, you know, the idea, you know, a tough shed costs two thousand dollars, so we're going to add a fifty percent premium to bring it to the planning commission. Why don't we do this? Why don't we bring this thing back with some type of caveats into it on what can be approved at the staff level and what requires coming in? Because the point's well taken. You know, in this, it gives flexibility, it gives, for the larger things, there's plenty of transparency, if, as they do additions or some of the things, those will come before the planning commission, but some things that clearly, you know, the idea of, you know, making them pay a thousand dollars and do a public hearing so that they can put a tough shed will most likely result in them not even coming in, getting any type of a permit or approval. So why don't we just come in with a classification of the types of structures that we can add into some type of definition to do that? And I think that, I won't put any words on anybody's mouth, but hopefully that might provide a little bit of a cure on allowing some streamlining a little bit. Yeah, and I'll have an opportunity to do that, and as again, I apologize, I did not think this through, but I didn't get to go as deep into the thought processes I'd like to have, because of these other items that had been added to the agenda. So, we should bring that back.
Cost would be one, yeah, one way, one criteria. Okay, yeah.
I've got a question.
Yes.
So when this is all said and done, assume, you know, you come back and we have some modification to this amendment that everybody agrees with, are the folks that live on these creeks, bordering the creeks, will they be provided with this information? I mean, you know, you might have stuff in the newspaper, maybe.
No, they have to be, and that's one of the things I didn't get to do, is I have to put together a list of all those property owners. Because if you're amending the code that affects them, you have to notify them directly, unless it's over a thousand properties, and you can get away with an ad in the newspaper. We know it's not a thousand properties. So you have to personally notify all those property owners that there's a code change that affects them, and I simply didn't get a chance to do that.
Yeah, I think we're off to a really great start, especially compared to where we were, which was.
No, we're.
You can't do anything, right?
Yeah.
But I also think we need to keep in mind, you know, I don't want to say the legitimacy, but this, the fifty-foot setback in general, right, we just approved the fifteen-foot setback, so I think we need to figure out exactly what's going on here to cause that setback. I know it's the creek, but, you know, was that just an arbitrary number, which, you know?
Somewhat, somewhat.
So we need to look into what's going on at the creek to cause these homeowners to be restricted by thirty-five, up to thirty-five feet, depending on where the home is located.
Right.
And maybe we're dead wrong on this, and maybe a patio will cause the creek to just, you know, go down the drain, so to speak, but that needs to be a consideration as well. Not to complicate things pretty too much.
Right, no, no. But it's a point, and as again, Ms. Whitworth would probably be here, but I told her that it was only a study session again tonight, that nothing decisive is going to be made as far as a decision.
My guess is, if you were to go back fifty, sixty years, you would find that that creek has, that bank has eroded somewhat. I think the reason is, you know, it's a safety, it's providing a margin of safety for the houses there, and that's why we don't have a fifteen-foot setback instead of a fifty-foot setback. I don't know that anyone's made those measurements, but I'm guessing slowly but surely it's eroding.
Yeah. Well, and I wish I could remember whether it was Pleasanton, or Coyote Creek in San Jose, or somewhere, but I remember during the last winter storms, them showing some creek somewhere where the, literally, the bank was being, was cutting underneath their swimming pools, and their pools were ending up basically collapsing into the creek. As Richard mentioned when he came on our first meetings, the way the creek tends to run now is it's cutting into the bank that's on the farmer's side, not on the homeowner's side. Not that that's good or bad, but at least it's not threatening homes at this point. So, so I'll be back.
Bring this one back.
This isn't done, and we'll come back with some more information for you.
Okay. Thank you. We will move on to C, Designation of Planning Commissioner to Zoning Code Update Subject. Want to do it? Your name's on there, too?
Sure. Commissioners, this item is basically asking for two volunteers to serve on a working committee. When you look at our zoning code and our zoning matrix, many of the definitions for most of the uses are straight out of like nineteen seventy. I think the highest tech business that's listed is a Xerox repair business. I think most of you have met Charlie, who works in our planning, and he asked Dave and I what a cocktail lounge was. So.
I told him I don't drink, but maybe John knows.
So, the objective here is to go through and really work to modernize. As an example, there's nothing about biotechnology. If Google wanted to come in and put in a server farm, if somebody went through our zoning code and matrix, even the iteration of that doesn't exist. But the land use codes, we're probably only looking at addressing about four or five of them in there, the light industrial, some of the commercial uses, those types of things. Just to bring it up, we're not looking to change the zoning code, this is not a whole redo of it, but the ability to go through and identify the types of, for lack of a better description, the types of animals in a more modern sense that would exist in the various zones. This is a working committee, as we've done with things like the DRC and others. This is an opportunity for us to get in, kind of grind through the nitty-gritty on various things, and when it comes to the entire group, the idea of going through maybe a hundred or two hundred definitions, that doesn't work at a public meeting, but on a subcommittee basis, it certainly does for people to go through and gain an understanding. So, we're asking for two volunteers, and we'll probably look to kick this thing off after the first of the year.
We have one right here. If you raised your hand, we have two. Are all the other commissioners happy with that?
Very happy.
Congratulations, Dave and Lisa. What kind of, I'm just curious, roughly a time commitment on that?
You know, I. No, honestly, we're probably looking at like four meetings. We're going to, we'll work to, you know, it'll go from a, hey, everybody, let's just look at what we got, to what are some hot things that we think, from the staff perspective, we're going to bring in, we've already started working on a complete matrix of all the definitions, maybe some recommendations. The idea of kind of beg borrowing and stealing from a couple of other jurisdictions will help. So, I'm probably looking at four to five meetings that we will get in, grind it out, because ultimately, that fifth meeting will tee it up. tee it up to bring it into some type of a joint workshop between both the planning commission and the city council to get some direction. If people feel comfortable with it, we then bring it in. It comes back before the planning commission on its way to the city council.
Okay. If you copy something from one jurisdiction, it's plagiarism. If you use things from two, it's research.
Good, good. We'll do that.
Okay. On to B and E, and we will now, two of us have a conflict on that, Dave and myself. So, we will turn this over to Lisa, who will take over the meeting. And we will depart.
It's on the side. It's on the side.
Oh, we, no, I think, I don't know how that works.
Is it working?
I think you might need a unanimous. Well, no pressure.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, okay. Yeah, we're gone. You're done for the night. We're done for the night. We'll see you next time. Okay?
Thank you. Kathy, what?
So, the item before you tonight is sort of a precursor to the second item. That's the last one on tonight's agenda. And this has to do with also a plan development, permit modification, but in this case, it's for the Callahan State subdivision. That's the subdivision immediately south of Stone Throw or north of Winter's Ranch. If you look in your staff report, in two thousand and five, the city approved a PD permit, a PD overlay for the entire Callahan State subdivision, but it was approved for only really two things. One was to allow the average lot size to be less than the standard seven thousand, and it was also to allow Lot One within the subdivision to be fifty-nine point forty-two feet wide instead of sixty. As with Stone Throw, the Callahan State's developer, which is Crown Communities, has a number of products that will need some sort of waiver amendment, whatever you wanna call it, to the existing plan development permit, if the site plans are to be approved the way that they are shown in the packet. I gave you, in front of you on the dais, an amendment to the plan development permit. I apologize that some of these weren't caught earlier. They are just additional certifications of what are in the plans that you have in miniature scale that may be difficult at best to read at this size. The larger set that you were also given might make it a little easier to read the setback reductions. So, I broke this down into alley-loaded and standard or traditional, street-loaded. And you see the ones in red are the ones, as I mentioned to you, that have been added since your packet was produced. Just so you know, the public hearing notice was generic. It did not reference actual footages that were being reduced simply after requesting setback reductions. Pretty much straightforward. I don't, I don't know that I need to explain them. You can just see that in many cases, the setback reduction is to the front setback. It reduces it as little as fifteen feet. This particular one, I believe, is seventeen feet. And it's oftentimes to accommodate a porch or a porch cover. And that's something that I think adds, and I think the design review committee felt when they looked at the design, adds interest and appealed to the front of the house. And it's one of the requirements and the conditions of approval that they provide some sort of amenity like a porch for fifty percent of the homes within the subdivision. This is again, another front setback reduction. Similar, another front, in this case, rear setback. This is the only rear one. It's seventeen foot, two inches. Probably can park a car there and not have it overhang in the alleyway if you pull it right up to the garage door. I think it's something that the commission could think about as to whether or not they would like to maybe increase that slightly, which would then reduce the front setback. And you could simply sort of trade one setback for the other if you feel it's more important to have more than the seventeen foot, two-inch setback in the rear. And another front setback reduction for porch cover or trellis. Another, I have an arrow there. Sorry, but it's a front setback. And then we get into the street-loaded or traditional houses. Again, the red is the new language. It's been added since your packet was given to you. Mostly front setback reductions, as you can see. Here's a front setback reduction for the TC2, reduces it down to fifteen feet. And I, the setback that I refer to in this document is the closest setback. You'll see on many of the plans that they show a setback to maybe the house being different than the bedroom or the porch is different than the front of the house. For simplicity, I just did the one that was the most reduced setback that they're asking for and not to another part of the house that may have a reduced setback, but not, not as much as the smallest setback reduction. And another front setback. Here's the one that's probably the most interesting one. And this was in meetings that I had with the applicant and also, I think, came up at the DRC meeting. So, the standard setbacks on the side yard are five and ten. And it's, in the code, it suggests, it doesn't actually mandate, that the ten-foot side yard setback should be on the garage side. If it's a two-story house, it's supposed to be on the two-story side of the house. The purpose, I think, I don't know this for certain, but the reason for the ten-foot being on the garage side is if you wanna add that parking pad to the side of your driveway for an RV. And obviously, you put it behind the fence and it's a little bit out of sight, out of mind. So, in this case, you'll see that the ten-foot setback is maintained on the garage, but it's reduced at the house. So, they still protect the ability for a homeowner to add that parking pad slab, whatever you wanna call it, to the side of their garage. And they're only asking for the reduction to the house itself. Same thing on this particular model as well. So, I think that's it. So, with the changes in the Exhibit A, staff would recommend that you would approve the modification to the plan development permit two thousand and five dash one. And I'll try to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from?
On the, I think you said that one of them had the, where the alleyway, where the parking was in the alleyway, would only have seventeen feet.
Correct.
From the alleyway to the garage door.
Correct.
And you thought that you could park a vehicle there if you go right up the garage door. So, there are.
You could park a lot of cars.
That are longer than seventeen feet.
Many of the trucks are eighteen feet. The extended cab, full-size trucks are eighteen feet or longer.
What I can see happening is people parking back there. Now, the bumpers are, you know, two, three feet of the truck because you don't, who's gonna park right up against the garage door? So, now the thing's gonna be sticking out into the alleyway.
Yeah. And this, on this particular one, so the front setback is fifteen and the rear is seventeen, two. The front setback to the house is eighteen feet to that bedroom number three. So, it's really just the porch element that encroaches into the setback the most.
In the front.
On the front. So, the balance of the house is eighteen feet, the part that most people think of as the house. That's, let's see. Trent, I don't think I gave you elevations, so it won't help. You would have them in the next set of drawings that's on for the second item on the agenda after this one. But I can't remember if that's a trellis. I believe it is and not a solid porch. So, it's therefore less impactful. So, to get back to Commissioner Riley, you could, in theory, reduce that setback for that portion of the structure to twelve foot, ten inches, and then pick up the two foot, ten inches or twelve, two inches, I guess, and put a two foot, ten on the back and make it twenty feet. And so, you'd have a twenty-foot rear yard setback, which is required. So, you wouldn't need a waiver for that. And then you'd have twelve foot, two inches to the porch element on the front. So, that would maintain the standard driveway depth of twenty feet.
Is that unusually close in the front?
Unusually? Well, yeah, a little bit, but, because we don't have too many that are closer than fifteen feet. But I don't know, in this particular subdivision, how far the property line is from the actual right-of-way. So, you're gonna have that unimproved right-of-way that will help minimize the impact of this being closer to the property line.
I might. Go ahead and look at Winter's Ranch and look what most of the houses have done there. Because they, they have the, they have the setbacks which are basically, they're looking to change just to have the modification, to be able to add some type of an awning or something going over that. If you go up, really, any streets, they've all added some type of a slab out in front of their houses. So, basically, people are doing that now. To do the flatwork, you don't, you don't need a permit. But they're basically doing what they're suggesting that, hey, we're gonna do this. So.
They're putting a.
Like a patio, like a little patio out in front. And then you'll see chairs on the patio if you drive by.
Right.
If you wanna, it's like a showroom for patio furniture. If you go up Kennedy Street, there's every, there's some nice Adirondack chairs out there, and they've basically done that. So, my point is, is that people on the front side are already doing this. So, the difference is that they're gonna put some type of a porch out there that'll, you know, meet what a lot of people like doing.
I would say that's actually a popular feature right now. So, very popular. Other comments?
To Commissioner.
Do you have a comment? No.
To Commissioner Riley's point, I think we would be, I don't know that it would be a good idea to extend the front for the sake of the back mainly because, as you pointed out, you know, how often are they actually gonna pull up all the way to the garage? And so, it seems like we'd be opening up ourselves to, either way, those big trucks are gonna be in the, in the alley. So, we've given up the front and we're still running the rest of the back. So, I don't know if that would be the solution.
So, in the interest of actually hearing from the public, if we could keep the discussion to after we do questions, are there other questions before we open the public hearing? And with that, we will open the public hearing at seven thirty-four. If any member of the public could, if they're speak on or against this item, if they could come forward? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing at seven thirty-four. Would the applicant like to address the question?
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Cam Takar with Crown Development, Inc. And before I get into some of the items associated with this, I wanted to speak in general as far as the extent of what's been provided so far. There's, in addition to plan-specific setbacks, like for example, each plan has a certain setback deviation that we're looking for. But then there was also some lot-specific PD amendments that were requested. And I think Dave ran out of time to kind of get that all into the staff report. So, so I guess my first question would be, is that something that we can open the door to discuss as well in this hearing?
I think you'd have to continue the hearing to allow that to be brought back at the next meeting.
I can't see that we could move forward. It wasn't agendized.
Well, it's agendized, but it's not discussed, so the public wouldn't be aware of it.
Okay. And then, okay, so are we just going to continue this item? Because there are some, you know, as far as the submittal package that we did, we had the plan-specific parameters that he's talking about. But then there was also certain lots where we had put together site plans for those lots. And I wanted to kind of get those passed all through the same process, if you will. So.
If we could maybe hear from John or Dave, I think your best move forward would be?
John may have an opinion. I would argue that you could decide what's before you tonight as to how you wanna act on those reductions that are being proposed. And then we could come back with a more focused staff report at the next meeting, talking about these site-specific changes that they want on individual lots.
I think my concern about that is you start parsing it off and then you don't get a comprehensive idea about how it's gonna look.
Well, then maybe don't make a decision tonight, but simply, you know, discuss what's in front of you as to whether or not you're comfortable with those. And then we bring the whole thing back with a global change that would be approved by the commission.
Are commissioners comfortable with that approach?
Well, I guess I didn't understand your, your point about not, not seeing the whole picture because it seems that would allow us to take the general items, make a decision on them, and then we can zone in on the kind of one-offs. But I think that we can still see at that latter meeting the whole picture.
He's got a story he was talking about. He's got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, where he's talking about a setback reduction that's specific to those lots. One, two, three, five more, one to the rear, one to the side, and one to the garage. So, twelve lots that are lot-specific out of the hundred and eleven that he brings to division. And they must not be covered by the general language that I've shown you earlier on the screen. So, what would happen is, I would amend that PD permit theoretically to incorporate these additional lots. And then you have an opportunity to look at those site-specific changes as well as the more general changes to the particular plan that's before you tonight. So, I could, I could see some advantages to waiting to the next meeting so that you have the full picture.
It is because, you know, those one-offs can make a big difference. And then you're taking a piece. Maybe you may not end up with what you think you're gonna get. So, but I'm happy to either continue it or to do the discussion on the first part and then continue it. Pleasure in the group. Riley?
I just got a comment about the whole kind of process here. On the, on the first page of the staff report down at the background, it talks about the lots having been reduced from seven thousand to sixty-eight hundred and fifty-two square feet on average, apparently, right?
Yeah, that was done in two thousand and five.
And so, we started out with a seven, seven thousand, seven-foot lot. We reduced about a hundred and forty-eight square feet. And now, the developers coming back and saying, we wanna, you know, reduce the setbacks and all that stuff. I just don't, I kind of question the logic of the whole thing.
So, the comparison is, for example, to what you had before you earlier tonight with Stone Throw. These lots are considerably larger on average. The reason they're below seven thousand is the alley-loaded product brings the number below that number. The standard traditional lots are actually, in most cases, over seven thousand. So, they wouldn't theoretically have needed this PD permit in two thousand and five. But because the average over the entire subdivision is less than seven thousand, that's the reason they were given it. I'm not disagreeing with you as to maybe whether you feel that they should be allowed these reductions in the setbacks. In general, they're not as extreme as the ones for the first phase of Stone Throw. But again, that's, doesn't mean you have to do the same thing for this subdivision that you did for Stone Throw.
I guess my main concern is that the driveways, you know, that the driveway's important.
Well, I mean.
A lot of people probably think it's not important, but to me it is.
Well, I think one of the things we could do is, I could look at the siting plan, which is um was given to you, but still very hard to read, work with the applicant between now and the next meeting, and figure out how many houses potentially would have the seventeen-foot-two-inch driveway. So we, again, know the magnitude of that potential on the subdivision as well as these twelve lots that are listed that need specific, site-specific setback reductions. And bring all of it back at the, and we could schedule a meeting for December, the second Tuesday in December, for all of this to be brought back for the commission to make a decision on.
So I do like the idea about looking at the overall drive along with the one-offs and the comprehensive package. But this gentleman right here has a comment as well, so.
Well, I I think we should ask the 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 person bringing this up what their opinion is and then go from there. I mean, I'm not saying we can see the point, but, you know, I think it'd be nice to hear what you.
Yeah, so um uh so the first thing I'd like to address is this seventeen-feet-two-foot, seventeen-foot-two-inch driveway.
It, can I, uh, I think the general question was whether you wanted to postpone.
Right.
And wait the next meeting, or if you want to continue the.
Right, right. Okay, but if I could, if I could just.
If I can, either we're going to continue it, you're gonna bring back the comprehensive package, or we can decide if we want to hear what you have now, but you won't get your twelve lot one-offs.
Yeah, well, I mean, we've we had submitted a comprehensive package. In other words, we we had did, we had done that. But if you don't mind, I do want to clarify this one thing on that driveway. And that is that our actual alley-load requirement for the driveway is five feet to the garage. So we're actually going, we're trying to make those driveways as usable as possible and still try to maintain as many single-story homes. So, you know, that seventeen-foot-two-inch driveway, we're actually going twelve feet two inches more than what actually what's required, recognizing that it's an alley lot. On the previous project that that was just approved, that their driveways are, in some cases, five feet off the alley, you know. So so we were able to maintain a nice alleyway that would actually have usable driveway. We have some as big as twenty. The seventeen-feet-two-inches is the smallest one. But but, you know, but as far as our entitlement is, we just need five there. Um to get back to the question, okay, um, I would appreciate if there was a way for us to um just talk about a few components that we could run with moving forward.
So we'll have the discussion and then bring back the the package for a decision? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, right, right now, there's a critical path in in progress that we're trying to get our plans done, you know. And, you know, Steve, maybe if you could come up as well and maybe talk with us. We're we're trying to beat the holiday schedule and getting our plans done. So maybe if there is, you know, uh, these setbacks that are defined here right now, if we could get that approved and then come back for the one-off component, which consists of for those twelve lots, we're open to that, if that works for you guys.
Not my preference, but Dave, perhaps you can talk about how we might, if we decided to do that, make it so that we get a kind of a holistic view. I don't want to mess with his critical path, but I also don't want to end up in a land of unintended consequences.
Well, I would, it's it it's better if you could do it all at once, obviously, I could see the point. But theoretically, they could come back at a later date for a second requested amendment to their plan development permit, totally independent of what's in front of you tonight, and you would have to entertain that. And the the public hearing notice was general enough that it could have included these twelve lots. I mean, not to labor the point, but I was never expecting the twelve lots. And so when they came in, I really didn't have a chance to react to them. I focused all my energy on what was submitted as part of the DRC package. I didn't know that there was actually site-specific until literally almost the day the packet had to go out. So I'm happy to look at these as if it's almost an amendment to whatever you decide to approve tonight. And you'll still know what the full impact is because I'll include it in the staff next time.
I think it'd be okay if we could have a general and a specific if we move forward with that, so that we're gonna have a comparison. Um with that, then you can go forward. You want to address the item?
I I just conferred with our our designer. And we'll go ahead and just table the whole thing and we'll we'll just bring it all back in one shot. That way, it's clear, everything is before you. And I think in the interest of everybody's time, because there's still another matter, so. So we'll just go ahead and work further with Dave and put it on the agenda for next time.
This item is continued.
That's okay.
Got a staff report for us?
I do. So the last item on the agenda that you're being asked to consider tonight is the design review for the Callahan Estates, which make a good subdivision. I mentioned before on the previous item that the design review committee had looked at these um homes that you're being asked to consider tonight. They made a number of comments at the October third meeting. They're listed as bullet points in your staff report. This I'll go again through fairly quickly. This is the house siting plan that I made reference to on the last item, which I'll be able to look at in relation to those site-specific lots that they want to reduce the setbacks on. And I'm just gonna go through not all, but some of the plans that were submitted. This is a particular plan that's one-story. We see all three elevations. This is a two-story plan. Um the facades mostly are stucco. There are accents of horizontal siding and stone veneer, like you see on this particular elevation. That lower floor, that pop-out section on the left side is a stone veneer. Similarly, here, has the same sort of treatment. These are just some examples of those two that I just showed you in color. This is the one-story on the left, two-story on the right. These are the alley-loaded products. That's what DA stands for. You have in front of you tonight the various color schemes that are being proposed. There are, I believe, thirty-one different elevations that are possible in this subdivision. And there are fifteen different color schemes. This is the traditional lots. Again, this is just an example, not all of the ones that are in your packet. Again, single-story elevation, stucco primarily. You see shutters on the side of the window on the front, roll-up garage doors that came out of the DRC meeting. With the windows or lights on the top to allow some natural light into the garage. And a similar thing with the stone veneer under the front window. And then this is just an example of what those houses look like in color. This is an alley-loaded street elevation, showing multiple different models and cap and finishes and colors. And the same street loaded of the traditional, which are the front-loaded. In my staff report, I talk about, again, the comments that were received from the design review board. I include the conditions of approval, numbers fifty-seven through sixty-seven, that were part of the subdivision when it was approved. And then I give a brief analysis of some of the comments that I made of additional changes. That it's not, weren't, these changes weren't, wasn't a hundred percent clear. I looked at the windows, for example, but I'm pretty certain that if you look at the side and rear elevations, the windows aren't trimmed the same. But I know, um, let's see, unfortunately, Commissioner Meyer had to recuse himself. But at the DRC meeting, it was decided that they don't have to have grids in the windows. But if they have a trim, the trim should be carried around on all the windows and doors so that they all look the same. That was one of the comments. The horizontal siding beneath the mats was a better reminder on Plan two AC. I think that was just an oversight. Unless they think if you look at that elevation, I think they just, the architects simply did not carry the horizontal siding over to that side. On the second floor of the Plan three A, it's recommended that shutters be added to a window on each of the elevations. Again, hoping to tie the elevations together, not as elaborate on the front elevation, but some element being carried forward on all on all four sides. Plan two, three, A, and B, again, adding shutters will help add some consistency. The last one, which I did get an elevation from the applicant late this afternoon, has to do with the large blank um wall on the rear elevation. And I don't, don't think I have that. I'm gonna start it all over. Don't think I have that in here, picture of some of those. I think it's, it's this, it's T four. Yeah, I accidentally didn't include T four on my PowerPoint, which I should have. But anyhow, if you look at the T four elevation on the rear that faces on the house, it's all in one plane. There's nothing to break up that plane. And so it was recommended that, and I gave examples of what you could do to help that. You could pop out a portion by cantilevering it. You could also just create a false pop-out, where you just push out the framing and the stucco and the window still stays in the same plane. It's just to help break that up. On the elevation that the applicant sent, I think they were proposing adding a small gable roof on one element of that hip roof that's on the back. That, I can't tell from the drawing that he sent me whether there's any relief from the wall or if it's simply just a gable that was added. So those are the comments. Again, there's some comments from the DRC that weren't addressed. For example, uh, the mayor suggested maybe looking at um composition chingles as an alternative for maybe some of the roof material. As you can see, they're going with concrete tile. I did note to the applicant today, if you look at the colored elevations that you were given, there seems to be a lot of gray, which is, again, sort of a substitute for beige now. Gray's now the new beige on the exterior color schemes. I mean, there are some colors that are obviously quite different, but there are a lot of ones that I think if untrained eye looks sort of the same. And so I don't know whether the commission has any concerns about that. But we are recommending approval. The conditions of approval that are included in the staff report only resi- only relate to the design review in addition to the ones that were approved as part of the tentative map. So these are, these are sort of a secondary set of conditions.
Thank you very much. Questions from commissioners?
I just got a comment. So I was looking at at a couple of these plans here and then looking at what you had been talking about in the prior item. And you were you were saying that you thought it was trellises, and yeah, definitely they are. They actually look very nice on AC one C and A two dash.
Yeah, there's a combination of trellises and actual solid roof extensions over the patios. And as I said, I think that one we were talking about, it was actually a trellis.
Looks good.
Any other questions from commissioners?
I had one. Uh, what is a multi-generational design?
Well, I don't know who that was. If that was you that said that?
I, I think it was, I think the mayor and uh.
Who was being questioned?
Chair and this one, and also Chairman Meyer. Uh but do you want to go over it? Do you want me to?
Well, I mean, I've got a single story. I think it's the, well, you give your answer. It's probably a better one than I would give.
So that was focusing on some of these larger unit sizes where they've got like sort of bonus spaces that they should actually be like fully designed for multi-generational and then actually sort of marketed that way, as opposed to people say you can convert them, but then no one ever converts them. These make bigger houses out of them.
Hey, so you'll have to forgive me, but I'm still lost.
What is multi-generational?
Like a, like a.
Kids, parents, and grandparents.
Literally, okay.
I thought it was some sort of. It's not, it's not a type of person. It's a group of people.
It's like intergenerational. Okay, seeing no other questions from commissioners, I'm gonna open the public hearing at seven fifty-five. Anybody who is with the public who'd like to speak on this item, please come up and do so.
You're next.
With the public?
And seeing no members of the public coming up, I will close the public hearing at seven fifty-six. And I'll ask the applicant if they'd like to come up and address the commission.
Thank you very much. How about the computer here? Thank you. So my name is Stephen Kubicek, and I've designed this project for um for Crown Communities. I had a a pretty long presentation, not pretty long, but long enough, that I did to the DRC. Would you like to hear the comments that I had? I think you were the only one from the DRC that was at the DRC meeting, right? So I am gonna do it. So I've been in the residential design business for over thirty years, and I focused my business on custom homes, major restor- major renovations and restorations, as well as multifamily residential and um production housing. Uh, most of my business has been in the East Bay, and I've received a lot of awards from different East Bay communities. And what I bring to this project is extensive, successful residential experience as well as a knowledge of what today's public is looking for when they buy a home. To that does, to that end, I've designed ten um various homes that are all new and unique designs for Callahan Estates. And they're not only beautiful, but they also live well. So livability is something that's very important to us when we when we develop this project. And to that end, there are many things that are designed into the homes to make them able to be, have visitability, be able to have um uh ease of access, ease of growth, ease of change of family and that sort of thing. And I'll point out some of those, some of those as we as we get further into it. Um, our community is a hundred and nine lots of various types. We have alley-loaded lots, we have traditionally loaded lots, and then we have corner lots that are both traditionally loaded and alley-loaded. So what that means is across our nine, our hundred and nine lots, we had to develop ten floor plans to answer all of the needs and create the variety within the development that was necessary. The variation of the type of lots creates a built-in opportunity to create homes of varying sizes and types. And that in itself is gonna create architectural variety throughout the subdivision. They range in size, our homes range in size from two thousand to thirty-four hundred square feet. And we've developed ten, I'm sorry, of the ten unique floor plans we've developed, seven of them are single-story, two of them are two-story, I'm sorry, three of them are two-story, and two of the two-story homes have the master bedroom down. And then we have, we've developed unique elevations across the hundred and nine lots for those ten houses. We focused our architectural aesthetic to be neo-traditional. And I've drawn inspiration from not only historic Winters homes along Main Street and other areas of Winters, but also from Davis, Sacramento, as well as some of the architecturally rich communities of the of the Bay Area, such as Piedmont and Berkeley and places like that. In developing the plans, I focused on livability, universal design, and visitability. We believe our market to be not only families, but also move-up and move-down buyers. And that's why it's important that the master is is located the way we've done it. We've designed the homes to have ease of movement, movement throughout the homes, creating perhaps a better, less rooms, but they're more gracious in size. This creates homes that families can grow in as their children grow. The design criteria also allows for a universal design, which will allow people to age in place. Wider hallways, wide doors between major rooms. We've designed in three-foot doors, four-foot hallways and three-foot doors into all the all the bedrooms. And larger larger rooms where maneuverability is possible between furniture. And this creates a built-in universal design, as well as allows for ease of visitability. In creating our community, I wanted to create homes that are unique and individual, but at the same time, create a community where the homes are harmonious. Many times you go into a development and the homes don't seem to go together. It becomes very disjointed. So we, I've I've worked hard to try to make these houses be individual, but also have a harmonious feel within the community. Some of the the, some of the um inspiration for the houses was like. was like the 40s neighborhood of Sacramento, as well as old Main Street in, in winters. There's a certain visual flow that goes from house to house in these communities. In conceiving our project, we started with fresh, we started fresh and new, developing plans and elevations that have never been built before. Homes that have unique design elements and that are not usually seen in production housing in Northern California. There may be a column, a bracket, a trellis, a brace, stone, brick, siding and stucco. Many various design elements have been used across our product line to create unique homes that are harmonious. Each unique floor plan carries with it unique elevations, which vary the roof planes, not just changing detailing on the exterior. The roof pitches change from the, within the same floor plan and the detailing changes. So, it's very difficult to tell which house is the same floor plan from the other. While keeping construction economy in mind, the finished materials are still rich and historic. So, in order to achieve our goals of universal design, visitability and maintaining predominantly single-story homes, we ran into a few road, designed roadblocks. And that's why we're asking for some changes in our setbacks. One of the things that was very important to us was creating the ability for cars to park in the driveway. So, that is why we're in the alley lots where we're allowed to go to five feet. We've created certainly much more. A suburban is typically 18 feet.
We're not going to consider setbacks this evening?
I know we're not, but I'm just, it's a design aspect that I've created into the product line. So, as I said before, our goal today is to introduce you to our project and get an approval so that we can move it forward. And we do have a movie that we'd like to show you.
I just started a bit.
I was ready to go. And so, what this movie is doing is it's, we, we chose the homes that we're going to put in the first block of Main Street. The right side of the street is front-loading garages, traditionally loaded garages, and the left side is alley-loaded garages. So, these elevations, you can see that like there's the trellis that, that dominates that front elevation. Lot of changes in color. We've tried to, when we use two-story homes, we've tried to keep a darker color on the bottom that helps to anchor the homes. We have developed 15 color schemes that we'll use throughout the community. And so, with 15 color schemes, we don't feel like it can be, they can be repeated in the same block. We can vary it considerably. And the color schemes will vary from elevation to elevation. The, the conditions of approval that, that Dave came up with, we're fine with. It's just that the only one that we were concerned about is, was his first issue of trim around the windows. We don't, we don't have a problem doing it where they're visible. We, we don't, we, we would prefer not to do it where they're hidden by the fences. So, when you, as you look through your packet and you look through the different houses and the different floor plans, I have shown the location of where the fences are going across on those elevations and on those particular windows, we have not included the trim. So, that's the only, that's the only one that we really have question about. And I think I did an alteration on T4, the A and B elevation to create a gabled roof element. And we can, we can pull that up. Yeah, if we, you can bring that up. Enough of that movie. Just seems to repeat itself.
So, you want to see that rear?
Yeah, so that rear elevation there on T4A, we have, it was in your package. You may see it as a, as a plain, simple hip roof across the back. Brought some trim into it, added a window, window box, put some trim around the window and detailed the gable the same way the gable is detailed in the front of the house. On T4B, similarly, I detailed and added trim in the window box to help break that up. On that elevation, you can see where the fence is going across. So, being able to see trim around the windows is not really something that the public would be seeing. But certainly on the upper windows, we can add trim, the trim there and trim around that other window. And then on the C elevation, the C elevation is, has extensive siding. Can you go to that one?
I don't.
T4C?
I don't have that one.
You have to go back to the whole packet.
Oh, I got it. T4C?
T4C. T4C.
It's 63. He's, he's 63. I'll find the numbers. There you go.
No, next, next house.
Oh, sorry.
There we go. So, there's how, that's how, there's how the elevation looked on that before we added the gable. But when we get to, when we get to the C elevation, because of the siding, the richness that the siding adds and because of the style of the house, I didn't like the thought, I didn't like the look of a gable on that location. I, I prefer keeping it horizontal, more of a prairie style, to go with what I've done on the front of the elevation. So, I did not propose it on this elevation, but I did on the A elevation and B elevation.
Oh, well, second, on windows, it looks like you've dressed them out with trim. Is that what I'm seeing?
Yeah, and there's siding on the second story of this house.
Yeah, I see the siding.
Yes.
Look at the windows.
Yes, and there's trim around the windows. Where there's siding, we have trim around the windows. Definitely. So, could you pan down the camera and up so we can see the front elevation of that one as well? Other than that, you know, we, I completely agree with you other things that Dave came up with and are happy to implement those into the project. Am I missing anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing is that if, if we do have to have trim around windows all the way around the house, on the first floor and the second floor, it does get pretty pricey on this particular project. You know, that could go as high as, you know, 2,500. Let's just use the number of 2,500 times 109. You know, it's about $250,000. And, you know, last year, or maybe the year before even, you know, something like this, we would have said, let's just do it. But what's going on right now is that there's, there's, we're getting hit with quite a bit of increased construction costs every day. I mean, for example, we have other projects, one of the projects we have in Sacramento, and every time we release a new release in a subdivision, the emails are just coming back saying, I'm having labor issues. My workman's comp is going up. Price of products is getting high. You know, there's, there's a, there's a supply problem as well with all the fires that took place, you know? So, for us, it, it, it's getting very cost prohibitive to put siding around, or put window trim around everywhere. So, in, in talking to Steve, you know, I had said, do what you think would be visible, you know? And, and that's what we had proposed at this time. That was correct, right? Yeah, so.
And I am, I am lacking some, some trim around some of the windows on the second story of the two-story houses. There's a, there's a couple of windows that we missed on the second story. But we are, we would like to take issue on where the public can't see it, that's behind the fence. Other than that, I can go through some, some specific things. If you'd like me to talk about the multi-generational or anything like that, I'm happy to answer questions for you.
I guess we'll take questions and comments from commissioners and we'll start this way this time.
So, we just learned what multi-generational was. I think at a previous meeting, Commissioner Baker taught me what visitability was.
Visitability.
Universal design is just something that's universal to whomever the homeowner would be? Is that kind of?
Yeah, so, universal designs means that, means that anybody could use it. So, it, it means that if someone, it has a lot to do with visitability as well. But also, if you lived in the house and all of a sudden you were in a wheelchair, we're, we're putting things into the house such as low-rise shower pans, three-foot wide doors if you're in a wheelchair. We've thought about how wheelchairs can turn around, turn the corner in a hallway. We've thought about how in the master bathrooms, you can get into the master bathroom with a wheelchair. And if you need to remove the doorway and the wall next to the toilet to put bars in so that you can transfer, that's something that can be done. And we've thought about that as we've designed the houses. So, so I would say we've gotten 90% there on, on the houses. There are some of them where the spaces are just kind of small that we just can't. But we're, we've done so much on the other homes that we feel like, you know, we've really, really come a long way to create that universal design.
So, universal design is a set of design principles? That essentially means that from the time you're a toddler to the time that you're a senior, you should be able to have customizable interiors to accommodate.
That's correct.
When you're talking about making it ready for grab bars, are you talking about, are they going to be blocked?
So, for example, oh, are we going to block the walls? Yes.
Okay, thanks.
We're pretty blocking it.
Any other questions? Question?
I've got some comments. I like the fact that you're doing a lot of single-story. Seems like a lot of subdivisions now, all you see is these big block two-story houses row after row. And looking at the video that was running earlier, it just looked really interesting to me and I really liked the design. The question on the window trim is if, if they have no trim, so then that means the window is just set right into the siding.
The stucco comes up and comes up to the side, to the window. Yeah, that's right. That's right. But everything that the public is seeing, so you can see that the windows are all trimmed on these elevations. Don't you like that trellis?
I like that trellis.
So, they said, Dave, I think actually we haven't required trim on windows that aren't visible. Maybe you can address that for the commissioners?
I don't know if we've required it. I know that Windows Highlands provided it.
Behind the pinstripe?
Yep, all the windows are trimmed the same. They're not as detailed. So, if there's a pot shelf or something like that on the front elevation, that wasn't carried on the side of the rear. Just the trim, the basic trim.
I can tell you that we haven't. For those that are not visible, the majority of the houses, if you look at Dry Creek Meadows, it's not that way. The subdivision that I live in, it's, it's not that way. If you can see it, they're trimmed. If they aren't, yeah.
Other questions, comments? I think that we like some of the staggering on the fronts to give it sort of a nice variable look. I notice you're landscaping and I'm pretty sure that's just standard is sod, but I'm guessing we're not getting that, so.
That's it, huge box, trees and.
I see that there's a landscape plan to be designed by staff and we're hoping it doesn't look like that. Some of the design review really like the, so just speaking for the design review committee, really like the variability of models and color schemes. And we were, I think, really concerned in the DRC with the lack of sort of visual detail in elevations, but you definitely corrected that and that looks really good.
Thank you.
So, anything else people want to add?
If I might just, somebody who was here in 2004 when this went through, one of, when this project was approved, one of the biggest issues was the idea of, oh my goodness, you know, here's this tract that's coming in and, you know, it's going to be ABC, ABC, ABC going up the street. Literally, I mean, they've gone beyond that. If, if you add up all the elevations, how many elevations out of the 100?
31.
Yeah.
31. 31. Possible elevation.
And, and when it originally, right, I don't know, Commissioner Riley, I think you were on the commission. I mean, at the time, it was like, you know, we just slammed 25 onto them and obviously they've exceeded that, so. That was a, that was one of the big things. That's your tract. And also the variability of the houses. At some point, I think we're all going to get tired of big craftsmen's style house.
I love craftsmen's.
I know. There can be too much of a good thing.
The only other thing I'd ask, and again, just saying, if you look at the Plan 2, it may be as fair as I can be, the Plan 7, the Plan 10, 13 and 15, the body color, which is the larger rectangle, is a variable shade of gray. And if you're okay with that, that's fine. I mean, the trims and the accent colors differ on virtually every one of those. But I'm just pointing that out when I said early on that there seems to be, gray is becoming the new beige, or beige is becoming the new gray, whatever you want to call it.
And there's that whole grage.
That would be the only other thing that I want you to at least bless or question or whatever.
Comments from commissioners on color schemes?
Good evening, I'm Cal Tacker with Crown Communities. So, I like to comment on the colors. There's 15 different color schemes. Here, as you can see, as far as the grays and the beige, I mean, with 15 different schemes, just imagine it's scattered throughout 100 lots. The 15 schemes is about three times to four times as many as what we would typically do. And the grays, I mean, it's, it's not more of an entirely personal preference. It is a market preference. Because I'm, you know, if we're doing, as a business, we have to make sure it meets the market. And that currently meets the market. It may not be a personal preference. It is not a personal preference, it's a market preference. I just wanted to comment on that.
I don't see anything that looks just like cement, so you know. Any other comments from commissioners on color?
Not on color, but.
Yeah, I, gray's definitely high fashion these days, but.
Two, one of them, again, you mentioned kind of marketability. And I'm going to ask kind of the same question I did prior. And just for information's sake, is there not a market for smaller homes?
Oh, I'm sure there is, there is, definitely there's a market for smaller homes. The problem that, it's not a problem, it's a challenge. The challenge that we have here is that the lots are bigger. The lots are more expensive. And it's hard to put a small home on a larger lot with the, with the cost of the land today.
So, that actually came up at DRC on this particular project. And the other issue I think that they face is that these lots are already graded. So, they have lots of design challenges.
Yeah. Right. And then the cost that you have to pay for the land and the cost of development has gone up. So, you've got to amortize that over more square footage, unfortunately. So, you know, with homes by town, if they've got some small lots, that's a perfect opportunity to get smaller homes into your community. It's hard to do when you have the cost, the land cost that we have here.
You know, I mean, I think by all means, I'm all for, you know, homes, the bigger the better. And, and, and I don't know that I would say the smaller the better, but.
No, but you look at, you look at how communities were developed back in the 20s and 30s, which is kind of the theme that I was going through here. They, like the city of Alameda, the homes in the 40s, is that in Sacramento?
Fabulous.
Fabulous 40s. Fabulous 40s. Some of those houses are very, very small lots and they just, they're very deep and there's not much yard left. But that's the way they developed them. And, and, but I tried to get that look with being able to keep it single-story. But the market is still, you know, you got to get to 2,000 square feet, you know, when you have this price point.
So, I think that one of the things we said on the DRC was we didn't want to see two-story homes on corner lots. But I think you have at least one two-story in your plan on a corner lot.
I think, I, I think that that was for, correct me if I'm wrong.
Is it lot eight?
Why don't you, why don't you pull up the unit next there?
I believe that was on the lots that are like on, facing Main Street and Taylor specifically. Like the, when you had a.
On, so, so recognizing that Main Street and Taylor Street is the serious arterial right that we want to keep. What we did, all the corner lots, why don't you just show where all the TC ones are? All, all of those lots, right there, are all single-story plans and those, each one of those lots are corner lots. The only lots that we have that are on the corner is Lot Number Eight, which is the traditional four plan, but what we did is we did an enhanced elevation on the side. And then I believe that that is the only one, is that correct?
One thirteen down there.
Are you using that as kind of a statement piece, or because it's a larger lot, or?
It's a little bit larger lot, yeah.
Well, if, if, our product line that we designed, I mean, we were already up to ten different plans just to try to make everything work out right. And it was the two-story plan that we were able to put on that one particular lot that has an opportunity to have an enhanced elevation on the side. And that's where Steve changed that elevation.
And it's a, and it's a larger, it's a little bit larger.
Yeah, a little larger, being a corner lot.
Being a corner lot.
Thank you. Anything else from commissioners?
The only, the only other thing I'd like to point out, if I could, could you page down, see these lots forty-two, forty-three, or forty-four? I'm just pointing those out to you. You'll see them in the future.
Oh, they're large.
That's okay.
Yeah.
For another meeting.
For another meeting, but there they are. They're problem children.
With that, I think I'll entertain a motion.
Can I, can I add one more thing? Well, I just. This is important, I just want to make sure that, so, there was a little bit of a.
Misunderstanding.
Yeah, misunderstanding that on the staff report, this approval is just specifying Phase One, and Dave and I have been talking about this, so I wanted to see if we could make this Phase One and Phase Two, which is the entire project.
Which is the whole thing.
That was their intent. I'm fine with that. And there's, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I, I, I think it all started, as I mentioned to Kim, when I first knew they were looking to purchase it, I was under the impression they were only purchasing half of the subdivision, and they were optioning the other half, and so they were only going to get entitlements, obviously, on what they controlled. They subsequently purchased the whole thing, so that's sort of where the confusion took place. So, I kept working on that same premise that it was only half, and that they would come back later with it. But as you can see from that siding plan, it coincides with the numbers that you have in your drawings.
So, we'd be modifying Item Four for Phase One and Phase Two?
Correct. And, and again, more by accident than purpose, I want to say that. The public hearing notice does not make reference to Phase One or Phase Two, simply references design review for the subdivision.
Okay.
So, you're not, it would be a violation there.
I appreciate that. Okay, so I hear a motion from some.
So, one question, on the motion, we need to, what are we going to do with it?
So, I, I have two things that I heard from the applicant that you need to weigh in on as part of conditions of approval.
What's getting there?
One has to do with trimming the windows only on the second floor.
Well, only where visible on the side.
Although, those are going to be all from the second floor, not on the first floor. And obviously, the sliding doors would go out because there aren't any second-story sliding doors. And then if you're satisfied with the change to the T four A and B that they proposed, and leaving T four C as it's shown with the horizontal siding, then you could eliminate four, small, Roman numeral V.
So, T four C, you did dress out the trim on the window or on, with the siding, you just didn't put in a window box or a pop-out, right?
On that particular elevation, he showed DS. So, so those would be the, those would be the two changes is to, is to A little Y and A little B on condition number four. Those would be the ones as presented in the staff report that you conceivably would amend.
Okay. That's your motion.
Still trying to figure out what the motion is.
So, the staff's recommendation, but just with those changes?
Would you like me to try and see if you like it? Or do you want to make this?
I'll, I'll.
Okay.
So, I move staff's recommendation with the changes that they've just discussed regarding the, the trim, not requiring trim on anything that's not visible to the public, essentially, right?
Correct.
And what was the other thing?
Deleting number, little one, little B, A B, and Number Four, which is adding further enhancements to the rear elevation. So, they revised it, so you would say, as a result of the revision, there's no need for that condition anymore.
Okay, so, so move.
And modifying Number Four to cover the entire development?
Yes.
So, I hear a second?
I second.
So, I hear further discussion. Hearing then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed? Any abstentions? Passes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Okay, do we have any further commissioner staff comments? So, look at the commissioners. Okay, staff.
Two items. One of the things we'll bring back to the commission, and I think that the comments, Commissioner Contreras, everybody talking about the difference between larger homes, smaller homes, those types of things, those are actually built in, and I think it'll really behoove us to bring back, just as an information item, to look at the entire west part of the city and the approved subdivisions, Creekside, Ogano Hudson, which became Windows Ranch, Callahan, and what's now Stone Throw. And I think it would really benefit everybody to kind of walk through and see what, what's out there, because the, the, the point, the points that you all are bringing up are really good, and there are, there are things that I think just for everybody to have a good understanding of, we'll bring it, and we'll walk you through, because you, you're hitting the nail on the head in so many things, and to understand where some of the smaller homes are located, it makes all the sense in the world that we should talk about that a little bit. For Chairman Meyer, he, he came by, and I've done that with him. So, we'll, we'll take everybody up to fifty thousand feet a little bit and kind of get you a view on that.
When you do that, it would be really good, I think, to look at what the historical square footage has been, aside from just the newer developments, because, you know, even in my subdivision, most of the houses were fourteen-hundred, and I've done some additions, but they're still well under two thousand. So, it'd be good to look at just what the historic plane has been, plus the newer addition.
That will be more work, but we'll, we'll do our best.
Just in general, a couple of neighborhoods.
We'll do that, maybe your subdivision.
There you go.
That's probably the best one.
I'll do two or three.
The second item, disappointed Chair Meyer and Ebs aren't here. I sent a note to everybody about cannabis, and I, you know, I'm taking responsibility on this thing. There, there was some information clearly that, some misunderstandings that kind of colored the view. One of the things that I really pride ourselves on is our ability to bring complete information when information, when informing either the Planning Commission or the City Council. And when it came to the outdoor cultivation side, that just wasn't done, and I think the way that we brought it to the commission, you know, I'm just telling you, we were wrong in, in, in a couple of the aspects. I mean, nothing that's going to make the city collapse or anything, but I think what, what we're going to do on, on the whole canvas, the council went through, the, the commercial side, if, if you look at the recommendations, they were, they were very bureaucratic to align various protections for the city as, as we wait for the state to come out with their regulations, which, which they haven't, by the way. You know, part of the frustration has been that it's really tough to get the information on where the state's going with all of this. The difference between medicinal and recreational discretion. And, you know, I can't believe that, you know, there are four hundred and eighty-two cities in California and fifty-eight counties. I can't believe that there are going to be four hundred and eighty-two iterations of regulation in fifty-eight different. But for the outdoor cultivation, I'll share with you that, that from the staff's standpoint, the lack of clear direction and regulatory authority, our world has been dealing with some very bad actors here in town. You know, I can't tell you the exact houses, but there, there are some that have in excess of, have twenty-four plants, and if you've never seen a full-grown marijuana plant, they're huge, they're like oleander bushes. And there are some places that the, the houses around them are absolutely unlivable. There's, there, there's somebody that is literally dying in their house, and it's unlivable. And, and that's kind of colored the perspect, perspective. Had I known that, that we could save the number of plants and those types of things, that absolutely would have been brought forward. So, we've got better information. We'll bring this back, and what I'm going to propose, we know of houses in town that we would love to take everybody to, and we're going to do that. We're going to do it in March, and then we're going to do it in May. Because the issue has to do with the nuisance value. And different size lots have different size, there can be some houses that have a dozen plants, and it's not going to be matter. There are some lot sizes that four to six plants is going to be an issue. There's one house that they had six plants, and as soon as the neighbors found out, the, the person was like, nope, I've got my card, I get six plants. And their neighbors were going to kill them. They were, at the end of the day, they eventually removed the plants, I think, because the neighbors were going to get them over it. So, anyway, we're going to bring this back from the cultivation side. Probably the only thing that we may hustle on just a little bit, and we'll bring this back to the commission, is on the idea of collectives. The thing that we know is that we can regulate collectives. Collective is, is out of Prop Two Fifteen and Prop, or SB Four-Ninety of all things. It has to do with the number of plants you can grow medicinally, but I get six plants, and Doggo gets six plants, and Commissioner Contreras gets six plants, so that gives you eighteen plants.
In one location.
In one location. The one location that has twenty-four plants right now, you know, they just wave four cards at us, and, and we haven't done anything about it. And do we need to do something? We do. But we may hustle up a little bit on bringing the, the idea of the collectives. The idea of twenty-four huge plants in, in any residential area is an issue, but we'll bring it back. You know, I, over the years, we've always tried to find the right amount of regulation in town. My goodness, you know, mind you, I, I'm the one that, that says it's okay to roast a pig in the middle of Main Street, so, you know, I don't like the idea of being seen as this authoritarian, just slapping down no on anybody, but we're going to bring it back, we'll work on this thing. But like I said, I, we, we missed it on this one, and, and I take all the responsibility on it, and we'll bring it back, and we're going to do a good job on this thing. I think we're all going to need to work together to, to figure it out, so look for it back next year.
I have one question. Is there a mechanism in place, however difficult, that would allow you to address that as is without an ordinance? I mean, anytime somebody is creating a nuisance, it seems like there's usually something that would, I mean, like Eddie Commissioner Adams mentioned, well, what if it's a German shepherd that's just, just thinking up the whole neighborhood? There, there seems to be an issue there.
No, there isn't right now. If there was, I, I, I would do it. You know, one of the, the issues is that, you know, why don't we have a dog poop ordinance? There needs to be some objectivity to the way that we approach it, and so I think that's going to, collectively, we're going to have to, to work on that. It's, it's not going to be very easy, and quite frankly, enforceability. We can't go into people's backyards, we can't look over people's fences, that's not the way that it works. But I think that, you know, as an example, with outdoor cultivation, if, if somebody is cultivating outside, you can put in, realize that under the law, under Prop Sixty-four and under Prop Two Fifteen and SB Two-Forty, it requires that, that the plants have to be behind a locked area not visible. And we could probably put something that says, you know, if we get a complaint, the ability to go in and inspect would, would be there. So, that's going to probably encourage people to be reasonable about it. Not that, you know, we want to become storm troopers or anything, but the reality is that if, if we get a complaint from a couple of contiguous neighbors, that may give us the ability to, to inspect.
So, how much medicine do these people need to have twenty-four plants? That's a lot of medicine.
It's a lot of medicine. Twenty, twenty-four plants will probably produce somewhere in the ballpark of sixty-eight pounds of marijuana.
I don't think it's medicine with that, close numbers.
We don't feel anything, so say that's a good one.
Anything, anything else you got? Any last words from commissioners, besides the market value of cannabis?
I have one comment, maybe planned to see that, I don't know that discussion is necessary, and I'm going to follow up with John and Dave later, but it involves the, I think, so it's ordinance Seventeen Zero Four-Ninety F, which was the mechanism that allowed for the PG&E solar thing to happen last time.
Right.
I, I wonder what that means, because it seems to me that that can be used in a lot of instances, and either solve a lot of headaches or cause some serious issues i- if, if all of a sudden you can somehow allow the planning commission or, you know, somebody else to decide what the original intent was and do away with, with, with it as it stands. And maybe that's a solution to some problems, but it, it just, it struck me as kind of odd.
Actually, it's not that unusual, because of what he, John said earlier about the zoning code update, you have to have that sort of language in there, because there isn't a zoning code on the planet that keeps up with the world as far as advancements. And so, when you have something that comes along that nobody's ever heard of, and your zoning code doesn't address it, but you think it kind of fits into that category, you bring it to a planning commission, and you say, okay, we think it falls under this category, it kind of fits this parameter, do you agree? Well, that's sort of what I'm doing here. The purpose of the shading tree requirement is to reduce the heat coefficient that's generated by asphalt. by asphalt and other surfaces. You can say, no, I don't agree that putting up photovoltaic shade structure accomplishes the same thing, but you can also say it does. So in this case, rather than tell PG&E, which would have loved this, I'm sure not, that, oh, by the way, you're going to have to wait while we amend our code, four months, it just didn't make any sense, because I think the trade-off is comparable, that you could have, as a commission, said, no, I don't agree, staff.
I think we also found nexus to the AB 32 requirements for carbon reduction and that the solar...
Would help offset.
...would actually be as good as carbon sequestration from trees.
Right, which is not what the intent of the shading was. That was, that was put in place before AB 32, but that is a bonus benefit.
Well, I'm definitely not calling into question...
No, I know, but you're saying that language...
What I'm saying is I don't understand, I mean, it's just, it's really, it's not obvious, I think it's consistent amongst a lot of different areas, but to be able to say arbitrarily that there's ambiguity, and the ambiguity then allows you for the intent, I just think that it's something that should be...
I think there's a reasonableness. I mean, you know, if somebody says, I want to put a slaughterhouse in, and you say, well, you know, you can make beer, and we think making beer in a slaughterhouse is sort of comparable, I think that's a stretch that we can never make. But I think in this instance, and again, it's wordsmithing, I realize, but I thought that was a legitimate connection between the two, that are new, that's relatively new. The photovoltaic stuff being used as it is today is maybe the last eight to 10 years. You know, the stuff before that, most people never invested it, because it didn't work.
But I do want to commend you, because not many people would defer authority when available, and you did, so I think that's...
It's easier to hang either list than others, or harder, I should say.
And with that, back motion to adjourn. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Appreciate you.
Well done, everybody.